Good morning. My name is Stephen Lazarus, L A Z R U S, and I am the C O N program supervisor.
To my left?
Good morning. My name is Annie Faiella, F A I E L L A, and I am a planning analyst for the C O N.
Good morning. My name is Yedera McGlaughlin, M C capital L A U G H L I N, and I'm a planning analyst for C O N.
All right. Also present are Maida Capozzi online and Leslie Greer in the room, who are OHS staff members that are assisting with the hearing logistics, gathering the names for public comment, and providing miscellaneous support. As I stated earlier, Maida is providing support electronically, and Leslie is present in the hearing room with us. The certificate of need process is a regulatory process, and as such, the highest level of respect will be accorded to the applicants, members of the public, and our staff. Our priority is the integrity and transparency of this process. Accordingly, decorum will be maintained by all present during these proceedings. This hearing is being transcribed and recorded, and the video will be made available on the OHS website and its YouTube account. All documents related to this hearing have been, have been, or will be submitted to OHS, or will be submitted to OHS will be available for review through our certificate of need portal, which is accessible on the OHS C O N webpage. In making my decision, I will consider and will make written findings in accordance with section nineteen A dash six thirty-nine of the Connecticut general statutes. Lastly, as Zoom notified you in the course of, prior to the recording of, or prior to this hearing starting, I wish to point out that by appearing on camera in this virtual hearing, you are consenting to being filmed. If you wish to revoke your consent, please do so at this time by exiting the Zoom meeting or this hearing room. All right, going to start by going over the exhibits and items which have, which I am taking administrative notice of. Then I will ask if there are any objections. The C O N portal contains the pre-hearing table of record in this case. Exhibits were identified in the table as A through S. Mr. Lazarus, Ms. McGlaughlin, and Ms. Faiella, do we have any additional exhibits to enter into the record at this time?
Good morning, Steve Lazarus. Yes, we have one additional letter that was sent in by Senator Jeff Gordon yesterday afternoon to our legislative liaison. It's not in the record. We just received it this morning, so we are in the process of trying to upload it, and then we'll share it.
Attorney Di Basio, do you have any objections to that?
Good morning, Madam Hearing Officer. Just for the record, my name is David Di Basio of Pinky Allen on behalf of Johnson Memorial Hospital. In addition, we have, you have no objections to the record as it is right now. The only addition hearing began, we prevented you with an appearance from Gervage and pro hac B J application, which was granted by the New Orleans Superior Court, so we'll be uploading that to the OHS portal soon.
Do you have any objection to my listing that as exhibit T once it is uploaded?
Hearing officer, did you want to give that, like, letter?
We will, we will make a, we will eventually make an exhibit. Let's see if we get any more elected official.
We can address it by the end of the day.
Yes. Yes, well-
It's uploaded before we get a chance to upload the appearance of Attorney Gervage.
We can, yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that it may go in as a different exhibit. However, you have no problem with this going in as a full exhibit into the record. All right. If I could ask you, Attorney Di Basio, if you could click, there's a button on the front of your microphone. If you could click that on, or it's around the back. There you go. You might need to, it clicks, it toggles.
The green light came on.
Oh, good, okay. All right, so you're all set then. All right. Sorry, I just got notified that they couldn't hear you as well. All right, so I would also like to know, the applicant is also hereby notice that I'm taking administrative notice of the following documents. The statewide health care facilities and services plan and its supplements, the facilities and services inventory, the OHS acute care hospital discharge database, the all payer claims database, claims data, and the hospitals reporting systems, the H R S financial and utilization data. I may also take administrative notice of other prior OHS decisions, set, agreed settlements and determinations that may be relevant in this matter, which have not yet been identified. All right, so because we've already identified you, Attorney Di Basio, I will go ahead and skip over a few of these. Sorry. All right, so we will proceed in the order established in the agenda for today's hearing. I would like to advise the applicant that we will ask questions related to your application that you may feel we've already addressed. We will be doing that for the purpose of ensuring that the public has knowledge of your proposal and for the purpose of clarification. I want to assure you that we have reviewed your application, the completeness responses, the, and pre-file testimony, and I will do so many times before issuing a decision. As this hearing is being held in hybrid fashion, we ask that all participants attending via Zoom, to the extent possible, enable the use of video cameras when testifying or commenting remotely during proceedings. All participants and the public shall mute their devices and should disable their cameras when we go off record or take a break. Please be advised that although we try and shut off the hearing recording during breaks, it may continue. If the recording is on and any audio or video that has not been disabled will be access, accessible to all participants. Public comment taken during the hearing will likely go in the order established by OHS during the registration process. However, I may allow public officials to testify out of order. I or OHS staff will call each individual by name when it is their turn to speak. Registration for public comment has already begun and is scheduled to start at three P M. If you would like to register for public comment, please do so in the chat function of the Zoom. Or if you are in person and you'd like to give public comment, you may sign up with us. If the technical portion is not completed by three P M, public comment may be postponed until the technical portion is complete. The applicant's witnesses may be available after, or must be available after public comments, as OHS may have follow-up questions based on public comments. Are there any other housekeeping matters or procedural issues that we need to address before we start, Attorney Di Basio?
No, Madam Hearing Officer.
Thank you. All right. So, Attorney Di Basio, would you like to make an opening statement?
Thank you, Madam Hearing Officer. I'll be brief because I want to be respectful of the OHS's time and the, the schedule we have here, and reserve most of my comments for the closing statement. Other than I'd just like to introduce our two witnesses with us. We have Dr. Robert Bruce, who's the chief administrative officer of Johnson Memorial Hospital. And we have Ms. Susan Petterini D'Amico, who's the chief nursing officer of Johnson Memorial Hospital. They'll both be adopting their pre-file testimony and testifying largely in accordance with that. And as you just may have mentioned, we are respectful of the time constraints here. But as this is a public hearing, we don't intend to be repetitive, but they are going to be going over a lot of the same information that's contained there, just for the benefit of the public and the record and the hearing here today.
Okay. At this point, I would like to swear in your witnesses. Actually, do you want to also mention your, your assistant counsel's name again as well?
Oh, I apologize. My, my colleague is Anna Gervage.
And could you spell her last name for the, for the court reporter?
Oh, you're gonna put me on the spot here.
Oh, okay. No problems. All right, thank you so much. At this point, I would like to ask your witnesses, Dr. Bruce and Ms. Petterini D'Amico, to please raise your right hand so I can swear you both in. Do you solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm as a case maybe that the testimony you have provided and are about to provide again is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God, or upon penalty of perjury? All right, thank you. I do see that they both said yes. Thank you very much. All right. So, when giving your testimony, I would like to remind both of you to please state your full name, adopt any written testimony you have submitted prior to starting your testimony today. The applicants may now proceed with their testimony, and I ask that, for my benefit and the benefit of everybody up here, please define any acronyms for clarity of record that you use.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony before you this morning in support of Johnson Memorial Hospital's certificate of need. May I just confirm that I'm able to be heard okay?
Yes, I have not gotten a I can, I haven't gotten a-
Very good. As we start, I just want to adopt the pre-file testimony. My name is Dr. Robert Bruce, and I serve as the chief administrative officer for Johnson Memorial Hospital, which is the role that serves as the chief executive officer for the hospital, to which I recognize and accept the responsibility to position the facility, to provide services to meet evolving community need, but to never sacrifice quality or safety in doing so. I have been part of the system that is known as Trinity Health of New England for now more than ten years. Trinity Health is unique as a large, not-for-profit, faith-based system. From twenty thirteen to twenty seventeen, I was the chief medical officer and vice president of Addiction and Recovery Services for the Sisters of Providence Health System, consisting of Mercy Medical Center, Providence Behavioral Health Hospital, and Brightside for Families and Children, all of which was later named Mercy Medical Center and Affiliates. From two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen, I served as the vice president for behavioral health at Mercy Medical Center and its affiliates, serving as the chief executive for Providence Hospital, a one hundred thirty-one-bed facility in Holyoke, Massachusetts, with a continuum of inpatient and outpatient programs. In two thousand eighteen, I became the chief of Addiction Medicine and Recovery Services for Trinity Health of New England. And then in two thousand nineteen, I was asked to take on the position for chief medical officer for Mercy Medical Center in Springfield, Massachusetts. I served as the chief medical officer through the pandemic, serving as incident commander and leading efforts to transform care and respond to changing needs and pressures in healthcare, until two thousand twenty-two, when I took on my current position of chief administrative officer for Johnson Memorial Hospital and its affiliates and Mercy Medical Center and its affiliates. Prior to coming to New England in two thousand thirteen, I served in director, medical director, and other teaching and faculty roles at Albert Einstein College of Medicine in the Bronx, New York. I was also an attending physician at Montefiore Medical Center on the inpatient medicine service since two thousand eight, which is where I completed my family medicine residency. I have been honored throughout my career to serve on several commissions in Connecticut and Massachusetts with a real focus on public health outcomes and on community services, including Massachusetts's Harm Reduction Commission, the Treatment Subcommittee of the Alcohol and Drug Policy Commission here in Connecticut, and Massachusetts Governor Charlie Baker's Working Group on Opiate Addiction in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and my C V is attached as exhibit A. I would like to state that I provide that clinical professional and leadership background as a context and as a testament to the fact that I've experienced addressing some difficult and complex issues in, in public health and in community care. But perhaps the behavioral health and opiate addiction crisis has been the most striking that we faced over the past decade. And never have we seen a more profound example of how models of care must change in response to the changing needs in the community and where access to the right type of services and treatment and where it's delivered matters, and it's not a one-size-fit-all. And so I have done my own analysis on this issue as I recognize that I am a relative newcomer to Johnson Memorial Hospital, having taken my position in April of two thousand twenty-two. My colleague Sue Petterini D'Amico, who is testifying here today, has more direct and firsthand experience of the circumstances leading to Johnson's decision to close its labor and delivery unit. And while I do not have that lived experience at Johnson per se, I have become very familiar with the history and the facts and the information in the record. And I agree unequivocally with quality and safety first in mind and community needs second with the findings that the labor and delivery unit should be closed. As I'll discuss in my testimony, the declining utilization of Johnson's labor and delivery unit, the availability of hospitals in the service area, and the difficulty in recruiting nursing staff and the numbers necessary to safely operate the unit make the operation of the labor and delivery unit at Johnson unfeasible and not in the best interest of women that seek reproductive healthcare in the community. I will always start with quality. There is a clear and critically important correlation between volume and quality of services provided when it pertains to labor and delivery and maternity care. Johnson is considered to be a low-volume birthing hospital at less than two hundred births per year. For obstetrical services, closure of the labor and delivery unit, as counterintuitive as it may seem to some, will actually improve the quality of labor and delivery services that patients are able to receive by transferring them to facilities that have higher birth volumes, more staff resources, and additional specialized care for the mother and baby should complications arise. An example of that are neonatal intensive care units, which are specialized spaces with highly trained staff to care for babies with extra needs. And we know in labor and delivery care, the clinical situation can change in a moment's notice. The statistics show actually that mothers and their physicians in the service area of Johnson have already been selecting to deliver at these other area hospitals for many years. In the community itself, Trinity Health of New England, the network that we have of obstetrics and gynecology providers will have and have remained active and will continue to coordinate patient care, including working with the patient to determine where they will deliver. This includes utilizing St. Francis Hospital Medical Center or Mercy Medical Center or other facilities as their pre-selected location for delivering their baby. Johnson is also simultaneously expanding the women's health in the prenatal and postnatal period and those services that are available in the community, thereby actually increasing access to more routine care. And that is where access matters. For the dozens of visits that are needed to prevent, identify, and treat the risks or the conditions that can impact a woman's mortality or morbidity. Because while the labor and delivery experience in a unit is a defining moment and defining experience, it really carries the potential to harm, if not safely delivered. It's what's done before that visit and what's done after that visit that holds the greatest potential to heal. And so, for any patients that do arrive at Johnson's emergency department for emergency delivery care, Johnson has established emergency department protocols that promote the well-coordinated care of the patient, whether or not they end up transferring to another facility. In looking at the community needs and the primary service area for the community that Johnson treats, we know Johnson is located in Stafford Springs, Connecticut. It's close to the border with Massachusetts. Johnson's labor and delivery patients primarily come from the towns of Enfield, Stafford, Union, Windsor Locks, and Summers. In fiscal year two thousand twenty, over seventy-five percent of Johnson's labor and delivery patients came from those towns, which we define as the primary service area. Yet, it's important to recognize historically, over eighty percent of all of the maternity patients, of all the deliveries amongst patients residing in those towns, Enfield, Stafford, Union, Windsor Locks, and Summers, have already been choosing to deliver their babies at other area hospitals. That has led to a low utilization, low-volume birthing center. In two thousand eight, fifteen years ago, there were three hundred and two deliveries at Johnson Memorial Hospital. Fast forward ten years later, in the years between two thousand seventeen and two thousand nineteen, Johnson delivered, on average, only one hundred seventy-two babies per year, representing a forty-three percent decline in total deliveries. Looking at fiscal years two thousand seventeen to two thousand nineteen, the last three years for which full statistics are available that were unaffected by the pandemic, an average of about eighty percent of patients in that primary service area consistently chose, or they were directed by their obstetricians, to deliver at a hospital other than Johnson. They primarily chose to instead deliver at St. Francis Hospital and Medical Center, about forty percent or more, Hartford Hospital, twenty percent or more, and Manchester Memorial Hospital, ten to fifteen percent, as shown in the CHIME data. And this trend was and is expected to continue. The decision on where to deliver, of course, is made by the patient with advice from their obstetrician or provider based on characteristics of the pregnancy, as well as the interests and desires of the woman. These hospitals may be further away, but at least two of them offer additional resources to care for the mother and baby should the pregnancy be complicated, considered high-risk, or if complications arise during the labor process, including having a neonatal intensive care unit. As referenced in the certificate of need application, the proportion of high-risk pregnancies is increasing as well, driven in large part by obesity-related complications, such as hypertensive disorders of pregnancy and gestational diabetes. This is a top trend. As stated in the articles that are included in the response to the certificate of need application, it's, it's clear that Johnson's labor and delivery unit had not and would not deliver high-risk pregnancies, and those patients in consultation with their physicians would continue to deliver at those other facilities, meaning fewer and fewer women in future years would even be suitable candidates to deliver at a lower acuity, low-volume facility like Johnson. The article that I referenced also does highlight the growing need for providers to invest in upstream or prevention earlier on in the course of the pregnancy to, to address the rising acuity and complexity that's occurring in maternal and neonatal care. This ensures and includes ensuring maternal and fetal medicine care and developing programs for patients with such comorbidities, including diabetes and hypertension. And as I will continue to address throughout the testimony and later on, while Johnson recognizes that its labor and delivery service is not able to meet those needs, as evidenced by its low utilization and its low volume, Johnson is therefore investing in the community that provide access to those services prenatally and postnatally instead. Focusing on the low birth rates in particular. Compared to fiscal year two thousand seventeen, the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two annualized number of deliveries from Johnson's primary service area declined six point two percent, six point three percent, from five hundred forty-three deliveries in two thousand seventeen to five hundred nine deliveries in two thousand twenty-two. Again, this figure comes from the CHIME data. Deliveries in Johnson's primary service area are continued and projected to decline by an additional three point two percent over the next five years between two thousand twenty-two and two thousand seventeen, as measured by S G two, a national healthcare trends solutions company. In taking that into consideration, the low birth rates, then looking at the demographics of the primary service area, it follows the number of females that are of childbearing age is also projected to decline slightly over the next five years. Decline, of course, corresponds with the projected decline in deliveries in that same service area, specifically females between the ages of eighteen and forty-four, numbered twelve thousand five forty-nine in Johnson's service area in two thousand twenty-two. And that same age group is projected to decrease, right, to twelve thousand three hundred fifty-eight by two thousand twenty-seven. Again, a reduction of one point five percent over the next five years. Additionally, the age group of females that has the highest projected population growth in the primary service area is the sixty and older age group. This age group is outside of childbearing age, will be the largest category of women by age within the next five years, and categorizes the community overall as one with an aging population of both men and women. Females aged sixty and older numbered eleven thousand two hundred fifty-five in Johnson's service area in two thousand twenty-two and is projected to increase to twelve thousand five thirty-four in two thousand twenty-seven. That's a projected increase of eleven point four percent over the next five years. The demographic information regarding these trends was also collected by S G two. While it's clear from the projections, there will continue to be some community need for delivery services, albeit it's declining over time. Patients do have a choice where they deliver, and the vast majority historically have already chosen to do so at a hospital other than Johnson Memorial. So after focusing on quality and safety, being a top concern, thinking about the community's impact is our next priority. And since the majority of patients from within the service area are already delivering at other hospitals, this proposal is not expected to significantly alter access to care. Since two thousand seventeen, an average of eighty percent of patients in Johnson's primary service area have delivered at St. Francis Hospital and Medical Center, Hartford Hospital, and Manchester Memorial, supported by the CHIME data. These and some other area hospitals are already accessible to patients, as demonstrated by patient choice to deliver there. By car, St. Francis Hospital is thirty-five minutes and twenty-seven point eight miles from Johnson. Mercy Medical Center is thirty-two minutes and seventeen point seven miles from Johnson. Manchester Memorial Hospital is thirty minutes and twenty point one miles from Johnson, and Day Kimball Hospital is fifty-one minutes and thirty-two point nine miles from Johnson. Patients usually have planned in advance in choosing a hospital for their labor and delivery with the advice of their physicians, and driving times will have been considered in that decision and may even be faster, of course, from their own home. Importantly, and also as mentioned, patients will typically travel to a hospital only once during their pregnancy. And the care that they more frequently require is the prenatal and the postnatal care to support a healthy pregnancy and newborn development. These services will continue to be available and are being enhanced at the current locations in Enfield, which includes access to services such as O B G Y Ns, physicians, obstetrics and gynecology physicians, and women's health specialties, including breast surgery, as well as primary care services, pediatrics, imaging, and lab services. The need for postnatal care in the community is also supported by the expansion of the Medicaid's Children's Health Insurance Program, coverage for twelve months after pregnancy. And for the deliveries themselves, hospitals such as Trinity Health's, St. Francis, and Mercy will continue to be available for deliveries, as well as the other surrounding community hospitals. The decision to where to deliver is based on the patient's choice and that pre-delivery- and that pre-delivery plan arranged between the physician and the patient. And Johnson will continue to be a place with emergency protocols in place to care for any patients that arrive to the hospital. They may be in labor, and the physicians and the staff are well-trained in those emergency delivery procedures, were they necessary. In regards to financial questions, there is expected to really be little to no financial cost to the overall healthcare system from this proposal. Cost-effectiveness of healthcare deliveries dependent on many factors, including balancing overall expenses relative to patient demand. In the case of labor and delivery services, the cost to retain and continuously recruit the staffing that's needed to fully run the unit far outweighs the annual demand for those inpatient services. Rather than expending already limited resources to keep the unit afloat, the cost effectiveness of healthcare delivery in the region can actually be improved if Johnson were permitted to allocate those resources to the services with higher community demand that directly impact outcomes far more so. As mentioned, the enhancements of the prenatal and postnatal delivery services will be what really increases health outcomes and health equity in the region. Studies show that the value of having access to a well-organized, high-quality array of resources and programs is how we decrease health disparities. Care for programs starting prior to conception and through a child's early development can greatly improve the health outcomes of the child. The incorporation of the additional services into Johnson's Enfield campus supports just that, the improvement of health outcomes and health equity and the reduction of disparities, and will continue to be a focus of Trinity Health of New England. Of note, the Enfield campus was specifically chosen for that reason, as a large portion of Johnson's population lives in that area. Based on the Connecticut town profiles, the town of Enfield is more ethnically and racially diverse compared to Stafford and Union, with a greater percentage of racial and ethnic minorities living in the town. Enfield also has more than three times the population of the other two towns combined. And as a town, it is more diverse and populated than both Stafford and/or Union. Is more easily accessible due to the availability of major roads and highways, and adding services there will actually increase access to care for a larger number of people. As noted in the Office of Health Strategies, Table Nine, in the application, almost two-thirds of the labor and delivery patients had a government payer, meaning Medicaid or Medicare, made up mostly of Medicaid patients. And it is anticipated that for those patients, the cost to deliver at other area hospitals would remain essentially the same as they have the same coverage throughout the state, regardless of the facility. Specifically, for the proposed termination of the labor and delivery unit, the cost of retaining and recruiting for the minimum staffing coverage needed to run the unit would be removed, and it would actually aid in the controlling of the overall costs of healthcare. Since the unit was already seeing low volumes of patients, the cost to staff and maintain the unit was very high relative to the larger programs that see higher annual volumes. And minimum staffing levels can't be adjusted for this type of care without compromising patient safety and quality of service, especially since labor and delivery nurses cannot be covered by nurses from other units to very specific competencies that are required and specific training is needed, which results in incurring a minimum level of cost regardless of the fluctuations in the patient census from day to day. If Johnson were to continue the service, contract labor would certainly have to be engaged, if it's even available, as the recruitment and retention of local staff has been unsuccessful. On average, hospitals per patient labor expense increased by thirty-seven percent over the last two years, which is an unsustainable trajectory, and the high cost of contract labor expense would ultimately affect patient costs, as they directly impact the cost of providing that healthcare. Instead, the overall cost to the state's healthcare system would be anticipated to improve with this application because there's concurrent initiatives in place to transform Johnson to address the changing needs in that area. By addressing other select services, one of the goals is to care for and work with patients to maintain or lower the overall acuity of their needs in aggregate. This type of approach really oriented towards lowering the overall cost of healthcare for patients in the healthcare system by providing those services in the community closer to where the patients need them before and after labor and delivery. In regards to the cost of care to the patients themselves, patient health costs for Johnson Memorial patients with this proposal is not anticipated to be materially affected as a result. For Medicaid patients, their cost to deliver at any hospital is not anticipated to increase as they have the same coverage throughout the state. For patients with commercial insurance, the individual patient premiums are not subject to the cost of the service provided by the hospital, so there should not be an impact to their insurance premiums. The out-of-pocket costs for an individual patient may be affected, and it may be variable depending on their health plan and their insurer, based on which alternate delivery hospitals they select. As a Medicaid provider, Johnson Memorial Hospital, St. Francis Hospital, and Medical Center, and the other area providers will continue to provide services always to patients seeking care, including the underserved and the underinsured, regardless of their ability to pay. Costs to the uninsured should not be affected by this proposal, as the same charity care and financial assistance policies that Johnson Memorial Hospital maintains is available at the other Trinity Health of New England facilities, including St. Francis Hospital and Medical Center. Specifically, our financial assistance policy provides a one-hundred percent discount for medically necessary services to patients earning below two-hundred percent of the federal poverty level, and a partial discount to patients earning up to four-hundred percent of the federal poverty level. Under this policy, patient copays and deductibles also can be reduced if a patient qualifies for financial assistance. And Trinity Health of New England also makes discounts available to patients experiencing catastrophic costs for their medical care. As a mission-driven organization, Trinity Health of New England is committed to working with patients to make healthcare accessible. All of Trinity Health of New England's hospitals will continue to care for individuals with high-quality care regardless of their ability to pay. Now, in regards to hiring, Sue will speak in more detail to this in regards to our efforts. But over two years, in the fall of twenty twenty, right during the COVID pandemic, Johnson experienced high turnover of nursing staff and was unable to continue to maintain the necessary staffing levels for nurses trained in labor and delivery. Since October twenty twenty, Johnson has had insufficient staffing to meet the staffing standards to reopen the unit and provide the safe, high-quality nursing care. Is notwithstanding the fact that over several years, Johnson instituted a very successful training program to train new nurses in labor and delivery. Those fully trained nurses, after that period of training, ultimately chose to work in busier other labor and delivery units at other hospitals. My colleague is going to provide more detailed testimony on this point in the efforts that were made to achieve the required staffing levels necessary for the service. Additionally, I want to highlight that there are no obstetrician-gynecologists in the community of the primary service area who are on Johnson's medical staff or who refer patients to Johnson. Historically, there had been only one individual physician in the community who delivered patients at Johnson, even prior to the COVID pandemic, when the labor and delivery unit had enough staff to be operational. And so, to conclude, as a physician, I would like to emphasize the most important consideration here is patient safety. And whether Johnson is able to continue a labor and delivery service in a manner that provides safe and high-quality care to patients who would trust us to do so. In a low-volume environment, with consequently an inability to retain the qualified labor and delivery nursing staff with the appropriate competencies and providers, we cannot provide those services safely. On the other side, the impact to the community of closure at this point is minimal due to low utilization resulting from patient choice, but rather the expansion of access into the prenatal and postnatal care in the community can be a very positive outcome. Accordingly, in regards to inpatient labor and delivery units for women that are seeking care, I want to emphasize that more inpatient units does not mean better outcomes, and closer does not mean safer. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak in support of this Certificate of Need application.
Great, if I may, would you like to have both of your witnesses testify first, and then we'll do questions?
Madam Hearing Officer, if I may, what we were going to do, if it was acceptable to you, is have Dr. Roos begin his testimony, and we were going to have Ms. D'Amico Pederini, and then both of them would address the questions the OHS has posed to us. I just didn't want Dr. Roos to have to speak
That's perfect.
for an extended period of time without a break.
Yeah, that's perfect. That's what I was hoping to do as well.
Yeah, so if that's acceptable, we'll have Dr. Roos, Ms. Pederini, D'Amico. Then they'll both return to answer the specific questions you asked in the hearing notice, and then we can take questions from OHS.
I think because you have submitted the specific questions in the hearing notice, we can go straight to questions by our staff. We do have quite a few of them. What we'll do is we'll do both of them. We'll take a quick break, and then we'll go into staff questions.
Okay, that's fine. I just didn't know if you wanted to get those questions, the responses to the questions sort of on the record for the public's benefit. I know I have the utmost confidence you both would have been.
Yeah, so why don't we go to Ms. Pederini D'Amico's testimony, and then we'll take a quick break, and then we'll come back with and start with our questions. If we, if you, if there's anything that we don't address, you would like to add on to the record, you can add that in after our questions.
No, just that when we submitted the responses to the questions, they're not sort of formally adopted by any of the they're not formally adopted the same as witness testimony, but the witnesses were going to substantially adopt the responses to those questions as their testimony. So to the extent we needed to do that to complete the record, and you didn't want them to address those questions, I'd just ask that we be given an opportunity to do that.
I have read the response. I probably will cite to it in any decisions that are made. It has been thoroughly reviewed by both me and the analysts up here. If there's anything additional you could let me add, we'll give you time to do that. But it has been, it is part of the record and has been considered, and will be thoroughly considered.
That's fine. Thank you.
You would
Glasses have to come off. I'm sorry.
My glasses will have to come off to read.
No problem. I have to leave mine on to read everything. Hello, if you would like to state your name and title for the record, and then adopt your testimony, you can begin.
Good morning. My name is Susan Pederini D'Amico. I am the Chief Nursing Officer and Vice President of Patient Care Services at Johnson Memorial Hospital. I'm also the Chief Nursing Officer and Vice President of Patient Care Services at Mercy Medical Center in Springfield, Mass. And
With doctor's testimony.
I want to adopt my testimony. Thank you. Johnson and Mercy are members of member hospitals of Trinity Health of New England, and which is an integrated healthcare delivery system that is a member of Trinity Health of New, Trinity Health based in La Boyne, Michigan. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in support of the Certificate of Need application for the closure of Johnson's labor and delivery service. My testimony today will focus largely on the issues with staffing and coverage that led to the decision to suspend Johnson's labor and delivery service and seek approval from OHS to close this service. In my capacity as Chief Nursing Officer and Vice President of Patient Care Services for Johnson, I was involved firsthand in staffing and recruitment efforts around labor and delivery services. I was also consulted and participated in the decision to seek permission to close Johnson's labor and delivery services. As I will discuss further in testimony, it was a difficult decision that was ultimately driven by quality of care and patient safety concerns arising from steadily declining births at Johnson. I've been a registered nurse since nineteen ninety-two and have also have a Master of Science in Nursing and a Doctor of Nursing Practice. I've been a Chief Nursing Officer and Vice President of Patient Care Services at Johnson since twenty nineteen. I am responsible for nursing practice and outcomes, as well as overall hospital and outpatient operations. I am also responsible for quality outcomes for patient care services. I was the Director of Patient Care Services for Johnson from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen and had responsibility for departments, including emergency services, medicine, surgery, perioperative services, both inpatient and outpatient, intensive care, physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech therapy, inpatient and outpatient, obstetrics, sleep center, radiology, again, both inpatient and outpatient, behavioral health, and patient experience, the flow pool, laboratory quality, and regulatory and care management. I directed over two hundred and fifty full-time equivalents, including managers, assistant nurse managers, direct care, and ancillary staff. I created quality dashboards and programs for seamless care delivery of patients to post-acute providers. In this role, I achieved patient experience and observed over expected ratio decrease readmissions and throughput goals at Johnson, and also helped Johnson to achieve the ninety-third percentile nationwide in emergency room likelihood to recommend. Between twenty fifteen and twenty eighteen, I was the Director of Nursing at St. Francis Hospital and Mount Sinai Hospital Rehabilitation Services, where I directed, again, over two hundred full-time equivalents, including managers, assistant nurse managers, and direct care and ancillary staff for all of medicine and surgical and rehab medicine units at St. Francis and Mount Sinai Hospital. Between twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen, I was the Director of Education and Professional Practice at St. Francis Hospital and Medical Center. I oversaw all clinical education initiatives for nursing and clinical support staff, and also created programs that enabled nurses to develop skills in a safe environment. Among other things, I also oversaw a new registered nurse residency program that onboarded over two hundred nurses in the last couple of years. I was a nurse manager for critical care telemetry, the staffing office, and flow pool at Middlesex Hospital from twenty ten to twenty fourteen, and nurse manager for the intensive care unit and step-down units at Midstate Medical Center from twenty two thousand eight to twenty ten. And prior to that, between two thousand and five and two thousand and eight, I was a nurse recruiter for Masonicare and a nurse manager for the cardiac intensive care unit at St. Francis Hospital. And I believe my resume has been submitted to you. I also want to mention that between nineteen ninety, ninety-two and two thousand and five, I was a staff nurse and then a patient care manager at Yale New Haven Hospital. As I will discuss further in this testimony, the decision to close the labor and delivery unit was a difficult one, a difficult decision that was ultimately driven by quality care and patient safety concerns arising from steadily declining births at Johnson and a sustained period of unsuccessful recruiting to the staff labor and delivery unit adequately. Until twenty twenty-two, there was only one OB-GYN obstetric doctor, as Dr. Roos referred to, who referred patients to be delivered at Johnson and who was on medical staff. From the fall of twenty twenty until the decision was made to submit this application and apply to close the labor and delivery unit, Johnson did not have required a number of nurses on staff to be able to safely operate the unit. Johnson's declining rate of deliveries, approximately a hundred and seventy-two births annually prior to twenty twenty, and a substantial decrease from a height of three hundred and two deliveries in two thousand and eight, impacted Johnson's A height of three hundred and two deliveries in two thousand and eight impacted Johnson's ability to recruit more nurses. Since fiscal year twenty seventeen, an average of about eighty percent. Of patients in Johnson's service area have delivered at St. Francis Hospital Medical Center, Hartford Hospital. And Manchester Memorial Hospital. Year over year, the delivery volumes have been declining in the area which mirror the national decline of births. Also, low delivery volumes exacerbated recruitment and retention of labor and delivery staff. Would then lead for employment in hospitals with higher volumes to retain their competencies. Without sufficient nurses, the labor and delivery unit simply cannot operate. Labor and delivery is a staff-intensive service and is distinct from other services. Patients may go into labor at any time of the day. And labor delivery unit must be ready with an. An obstetrician, gynecologist, physician form the delivery as well as the required number of other clinical and nursing staff. Even with low volumes and low utilization of the labor and delivery services, a hospital must maintain. Full staffing coverage of the labor and delivery unit around the clock to provide the services safely and effectively. In the summer of twenty twenty. Johnson resumed labor and delivery services following a short suspension due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. On April sixth, twenty twenty, Johnson informed OHS by letter. That as of April twelfth, twenty twenty, it would temporarily suspend services in its Labor and Delivery Department. Along with the letter, the hospital filed a notification form pursuant to the C O N waiver established by Executive Order seven B. On July first, twenty twenty, the hospital filed filed a letter notifying OHS of its intention to resume all services. Including labor and delivery services on or about July sixth, twenty twenty. All services previously suspended were returned to full operation. In the fall of twenty twenty, Johnson experienced a high turnover of nursing staff. And was unable to maintain the necessary staffing level for nurses trained in labor and delivery. And since October of twenty twenty, Johnson has had insufficient staffing. To meet staffing standards to reopen the unit and provide safe, high-quality nursing care. Three labor and delivery nurses remained on staff. And this number is drastically short of the number needed to provide safe labor and delivery services. Johnson began to actively recruit staff. But since twenty twenty, has been unable to reach the staffing levels necessary. To safely continue to provide labor and delivery services. In terms of recruiting efforts for two years since the fall of twenty twenty until the filing of the C O N application. Johnson made concerted and significant efforts to advertise its open labor and delivery positions and recruit qualified nurses. We offered hiring bonuses. We utilized our regional first-choice staffing pool. To advertise for for and recruit for labor and delivery positions and attempted to work with our contract labor vendors. And staffing agencies to advertise and recruit nurses for the open labor and delivery positions. Unfortunately, given the current regional and national staffing shortages. Competing contract labor contracts and the current level of community need for labor and delivery RNs, there is very little interest. And our open positions from qualified labor and delivery nurses. Given the difficulty in recruiting trained labor and delivery nurses, Johnson had to pursue other options. A decision was made to hire nurses that were responding to Johnson's recruitment efforts, even if they had limited or no experience in labor and delivery. We would, our time and effort, we were successful in hiring eight nurses with limited or no labor and delivery experience. To train these nurses, Johnson sent the newly hired nurses to take part in a thorough orientation and training program. In labor and delivery at St. Francis Hospital and Medical Center in Hartford. The training program was tailored to each nurse depending on that nurse's labor, prior labor and delivery experience. And lasted between eight and sixteen weeks. Training was available to the full continuum of care provided in a labor and delivery unit. Including obstetrics, labor and delivery, and postpartum care. As well as emergency procedures and nursery. As I stated, the training was specifically tailored to each nurse. In training, the nurses worked the schedules they had been hired to work, but worked with a preceptor. And shadowed nursing staff at St. Francis Hospital and Medical Center. The goal was to bring these eight nurses back to Johnson. With experience in labor and delivery and to be able to resume the labor and delivery service by June or July twenty twenty-one. At the same time, Johnson continued to actively recruit and advertise for nursing positions. As Johnson was still short of the targeted full-time equivalent needed to safely staff and operate the labor and delivery unit. Given the current regional and national staffing shortages, competing contract labor contracts. And the community need for labor and delivery RNs. We have seen very little interest in our currently posted labor and delivery positions despite active recruitment. The target to operate a labor and delivery unit is twelve point six full-time equivalents. Which taking into account shift schedules effectively translates into having three trained labor and delivery nurses on staff at all times. Twenty-four hour day, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. With all the hiring and recruiting efforts, Johnson achieved an eight point four at full-time equivalent. This effectively translates to having two nurses around the clock. To reach the targeted full-time equivalent, Johnson needed one more nurse available twenty-four seven, either onsite or on call. Unable to recruit any more providers, the remaining option was to ask labor and delivery nurses to cover additional on-call shifts. As well as their schedule shifts. This meant the nurses would work five shifts per week, three shifts onsite and two on-call shifts. Even so, there was a further concern that if one of these nurses was sick or otherwise unavailable. The labor and delivery unit would again fall short of the required staffing levels. Following the COVID nineteen pandemic, Johnson had less nurses and other departments that it could pull from in the event. The labor and delivery unit needed emergency staff. Initially, our labor and and delivery nurses agreed to take extra call shifts. But shortly thereafter, they reconsidered. All area hospitals had larger nursing staff and were not asking their nurses to take. Call on such a short rotation schedule as Johnson was. I do want to emphasize that our labor and delivery training program was very effective. Although unfortunately, after experiencing the high birth volume and the robust support services at St. Francis. The newly hired nurses chose not to work at Johnson, instead took labor and delivery positions at St. Francis. And other hospitals with higher birth rates and more robust staffing. Newly trained nurses want to work in a setting with greater staffing and more experienced staff available, which creates more learning. More clinical support and professional mentorship. The nurses were aware that a hospital like Johnson, they would be responsible for a larger continuum of care and labor and delivery. And would need to be proficient and self-sufficient in labor and delivery skills. That in other hospitals might be taken over or delegated to other providers. The decision to take jobs at other hospitals instead of Johnson was also influenced by the fact that to meet the targeted full-time equivalent. Nurses would have had to take more call shifts at Johnson. Than they would have to take at other hospitals. Being a part of a smaller staff at Johnson meant more on time on call. And less freedom for nurses in their personal life. We remain committed to providing services to the Johnson community and in collaborating with our. OB providers have continued to safely serve obstetrical patients in our ministry hospitals, St. Francis Medical Center. Furthermore, Johnson does not want to leave our vulnerable populations, including Medicaid and Injuent residents. Without access to such vital services. The birth plan is discussed with each patient and to date, we have not received negative comments. Or on toward patient outcomes for this temporary process and providing labor and delivery services. Our emergency department physicians are qualified to treat obstetrical patients for routine emergency department visits. And there are also processes in place that ensure safe transfers. Of obstetrical patients who present to the R E D in the rare event that that occurs. We acknowledge that emergencies do occur. And that patients may not be able to deliver at their planned delivery hospital. As always, Johnson will continue to prepare for, accept and evaluate women presenting to the Johnson Emergency Department. All patients will receive emergency medical screening and will either be stabilized. Or appropriately transferred to St. Francis Medical Center or another hospital with full labor and delivery services. For mothers who require emergency deliveries, Johnson's board-certified emergency medicine physicians are trained. To provide emergency obstetrical care to obstetric and delivery patients who need emergency services. Furthermore, all equipment and supplies needed to perform an emergency delivery are still located and stored. For the Johnson's Emergency Department to ensure the appropriate and timely care is provided. Johnson is also committed to improving and ensuring access to the care that is expected, that expecting mothers and. Their newborns need in the community. Johnson is currently expanding access for women's health generally and specifically pre and post-delivery care. In the community and specifically at its location in Enfield. The Enfield services include access to services such as. OB-GYN, Women's Health Specialties, Primary Care, Pediatrics, Imaging and Lab. This is the short type of wraparound care that will make a difference to patients as they will have to travel a shorter distance to receive care in their community. Through the prenatal period, Johnson will continue to provide and coordinate care for patients, create birth plans. And select a delivery hospital and following delivery will be able to provide follow-up care in the community. I want to emphasize that our staffing challenges are related to low volume of deliveries that we have had in recent years at Johnson. From three hundred and two deliveries in two thousand and eight. In the years twenty seventeen and twenty nineteen, we have delivered only on an average of one hundred and seventy-two babies per year. That is less than one baby every two days. Taking into account shift-based staffing, this number could be even lower, lower for a nurse who is scheduled to work just a few shifts a week. I am a nurse by training and have practiced in clinical settings for many years. I can understand the concerns of nurses we try to retain who express their desire to work in busier hospitals. Where they would have more access to more deliveries, more staff and more opportunities for more clinical experiences. The low volume of births is therefore related to our ability to recruit. And retain qualified staff and the numbers needed to safely run a labor and delivery unit. On a personal note, I want to mention that I am a board member of the Tolland County Chamber of Commerce since twenty eighteen. And I'm invested in the health and success of Tolland County and its residents. I believe granting this C O N for termination of labor and delivery services at Johnson. Is the best way to ensure residents have access to high-quality and safe labor and delivery inpatient care they deserve. In conclusion, the decision to apply for the C O N to close labor and delivery unit was taken with much consideration. And as a last resort, due to low volume and protracted lack of adequate staffing to reach the required nurse staffing levels. In my professional opinion, this decision is necessary to ensure patient safety. Thank you for the opportunity to testify here today in support of this C O N application. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to allow Attorney Vasio to ask any questions. For your witnesses that you would like to ask, and then we'll take a break for OHS. Do you have any questions for your witnesses?
I have no questions at this time. Thank you.
So at that point, we'll take a quick ten-minute break. It is now ten oh six. Let's meet back. Twenty-minute break. Let's make a twenty-minute break. We will meet back here at, we'll go at ten thirty. That way, everybody has enough time to to use the bathroom, do whatever they need. We will now break until ten thirty. Thank you. Ten thirty. And Zoom has just notified you, your remaining in this hearing is your consent to being recorded. If you do not consent to being recorded or videotaped, please. Uh, remove yourself from the Zoom hearing or this hearing room at this time. All right, since nobody has removed themselves from our hearing room, we'll go ahead to our questions. I believe we are starting with Yadira.
Yes, we are. Okay, in the first completeness that our responses exhibit, the. PDF page six shows the numbers of births originating from J M H's primary service area, the PSA. At J M I, at J M H, and PDF page eight shows the historical utilization by service. However, the primary service area percentage is only sixty-six point sixty-six percent in twenty seventeen. Sixty-eight percent in twenty eighteen, seventy-one percent in twenty nineteen. Seventy-five percent in twenty twenty of the historical use. Does that mean that one-third of the twenty-five percent of the deliveries are coming from outside the primary service area?
So.
I could just ask you to identify yourself by name first before answering questions.
Of course. Good morning again. Dr. Robert Roos, Chief Administrative Officer for Johnson Memorial Hospital. Uh, to the best of my recollection, uh, when looking at the primary service area of the five towns of Enfield, Stafford, Union. Windsor Locks and Summers, they represented upwards of around seventy-five percent of the deliveries. And so I would have to refer to the specific notes, uh, but yes. Uh, as they represent between sixty-eight to seventy-five percent, then there would be twenty-five to thirty. Three percent that would be coming from outside that area.
Thank you. When did G M H begin experiencing a decrease in volume?
Been looking historically in regards to inpatient labor and delivery services in two thousand and eight. There were three hundred and two deliveries. And over the period of the ten years to follow, they had declined to an average of one hundred and seventy-two deliveries. Between the years of fiscal year seventeen to fiscal year twenty nineteen. So during that ten-year period, there was an over forty percent decline in deliveries. During that time, that was consistent and was expected to continue. Beyond that time.
When did G M H begin referring patients out to other facilities?
Can you clarify that question?
So at what, at what point did the hospital begin referring the labor and delivery patients to other facilities, to other hospitals?
So I I just want to clarify, clarify and respond to that, to the question just in the best way that I can. Johnson Memorial Hospital. Had operated as a, a birthing center or a lower-volume maternity labor and delivery unit. And so through its existence, would. Uh, triage and at times transfer patients to appropriate levels of care. If the presenting woman needed a higher acuity level service. In regards to the operation of the unit. That was in full operation under those clinical guidelines up until twenty twenty.
Can I rephrase that question?
Yeah.
When did the unit stop taking patients? Um, or incoming patients?
Just a moment, I'll refer to the the dates that I believe that that occurred. It was in April of two thousand and twenty, uh, that we initially temporarily suspended. There was the attempt to reopen those services in July of two thousand and twenty, and then a further notification in October of two thousand and twenty where those services, uh, were not able to be staffed and operational. The data presented regarding the declining births was in the fiscal year prior to the impact of the onset of the COVID pandemic as well as that initial temporary suspension in April of two thousand and twenty.
I would just like to ask a question. When did the, um, the last practicing OB-GYN at your hospital terminate their affiliation?
He had ceased deliveries, uh, in two thousand and twenty, but had, uh, removed himself from the medical staff in October, two thousand and twenty-two.
What, um, month in two thousand and twenty did he?
Oh, it, it, it correlated in line with our temporary pause in April of two thousand and twenty. I would have to refer back to clinical records to know when exactly the last date a delivery was done at the hospital. I don't have that date here right at present.
Um, sorry, I do have a quick follow-up question regarding the decrease in volume. You had mentioned in two thousand and eight, you had a roughly around in, in the three hundreds, correct? Um, you had mentioned though, Dr. Roos, that two hundred was a magic number, um, for a safe and quality, um, high-volume birthing, um, unit. When did J M H start to hit the two hundreds?
I want to, um, speak about the, the data a little bit in regards to the studies that have looked at volumes in maternity units and overall outcomes and quality. As you pointed out, uh, there is a article that is referenced that speaks and categorizes low-volume centers as those under two hundred deliveries per year. Uh, it may not be a magic number. There is going to be some relative, uh, impact, uh, potentially at lower levels versus higher levels because of the impact that it has on the ability to sustain true clinical competencies from a nursing and provider perspective when deliveries are so infrequent and therefore the exposure to those uh, moments, and I'll say moments because it truly can just be moments sometimes where the risk can be introduced, particularly in a high-risk setting like obstetrics. Uh, and the, the level of awareness, engagement, or experience to identify those moments can be impacted when one is not, uh, encountering those on a regular basis, which is what, uh, can relate to having higher maternal mortality specifically. Um, I'd have to refer to the, the, the record in terms of our application to see at which point. Uh, but it was certainly as we approached, uh, two thousand, the two thousand teens, when that number started to continue to decline more significantly.
Okay, my next question. If the application is not approved, what is the projected volume for the remainder of this year through two thousand and twenty-six?
Projected volume?
Yes.
So a question to the projected volume. So I think that is, um, I'll answer that in a couple of ways, um, based on experience, uh, the reality and the trends that have been projected by sort of national companies. And we talked a bit about how we had seen that volume decline at Johnson specifically, uh, from the three hundreds to less than two hundred, an average of one seventy-two. Because the services were not operational, uh, it's hard to exactly identify how, what the demand for those services would have been in sort of the same situation. But what we do know is the pandemic changed many things. And we also know that the trends have continued such that the population of childbearing age women in those communities has decreased, not increased, the birth rates have decreased, not increased. And what we know, which I think is likely one of the most important relevant factors, is the one provider who was utilizing Johnson Memorial Hospital as the facility for patient choice relinquished his medical staff privileges and, uh, assumed his care of patients into a health system that uses another hospital as well. So that physicians, patients are now also being directed to other hospitals, uh, other area hospitals that provide services, and therefore there is not one obstetrician or obstetrical provider in the service area that right now that would use Johnson. So you could project theoretically that there would be very few, if not close to single or double digits, uh, of a demand for services at the hospital itself.
I have a follow-up question to that. Um, your, uh, the doctor that was practicing at the hospital stopped delivering in April of two thousand and twenty. Who, um, was delivering the babies that were born at J M H between October, or sorry, July of two thousand and twenty and October of two thousand and twenty-one? You ceased again. Same though.
Yeah, it was this, so I, the, the, any of the deliveries that were performed in two thousand and twenty. So I'll clarify, any of the deliveries that were performed in two thousand and twenty were performed by that physician.
Who's been delivering since?
There, there have been, nobody has been delivering since. There have not been any babies delivered at Johnson since.
Emergency, there's been?
There have been two. Okay, excuse me. Um, there have, there have been, after consultation with Sue, there have been a small number of deliveries. Uh, we believe that that is two that have occurred, and those would have been delivered by emergency room physicians at Johnson Memorial Hospital that were trained in the ability to deliver in emergency situations and then arrange for follow-up care.
Um, excuse me. This is Steve Lazarus. Just to follow up while we're talking about the, um, OB-GYNs. We've talked a little bit today about recruiting of the nursing staff. Can you talk a little bit about the actual recruiting of OB-GYN physicians? Uh, how many did you have back in, say, for example, two thousand and eight, when you had three hundred and two deliveries? And over the years, if you can give a little background, that would be helpful, and any recruiting efforts to talk about.
So, after conferring, it's our understanding and belief that the, it was the one physician uh, that was doing the deliveries at Johnson Memorial Hospital, uh, from two thousand and eight, until at which point, uh, he had stopped delivering at Johnson Memorial and had begun referring his patients elsewhere, which did include St. Francis Hospital Medical Center. And our focus, um, during that period of time, because we had a obstetrician on staff during that time, was to focus on the recruitment of the nurses as the priority. It was not until two thousand and twenty-two when he relinquished his privileges, uh, where we then were left without a sit, situation, we were left with a, a situation without a physician with privileges, uh, to deliver, uh, babies at Johnson Memorial Hospital. And so our priority in terms of recruitment had always been on nursing because with the physician, we couldn't operate unless we had the nurses, and that was the focus. And we, as, as mentioned in the testimony, extensively struggled and were unsuccessful in creating a, a sustainable plan for nursing care twenty-four seven to meet those requirements. And it wasn't until after that point in which the physician shortage became a, another primary concern.
And the physician, that one physician, was he part of a medical practice, a single medical practice own, or was it multiple OB-GYNs?
At that time, my understanding is part of a single medical practice. Um, it was not until, uh, more recently, they became part of a larger medical group practice. And he was not an employee of Trinity Health of New England, but a, a, uh, independent member on the medical staff.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. My next question is, given that J M H had closed its labor and delivery services and then reopened these services, has J M H experienced an increase in volume?
No, um, we have not seen an increase in volume.
Thank you. Okay, next question. What locations were these patients going to when J M H was closed?
Prior to, uh, as mentioned in the testimony, prior to the closure, these patients were already identifying and delivering at other area hospitals, uh, in preference from the service area in preference to Johnson Memorial Hospital. After the closure, that same trend continued. And the predominant hospital which those patients delivered was St. Francis Hospital and Medical Center, Hartford Hospital, followed by Manchester Memorial Hospital. And there were likely but less delivering also at De Kimball Hospital or potentially at Mercy Medical Center in Springfield, Massachusetts.
Thank you. And how does J M H know that these other provider locations are willing and able to accept these patients? And my, the other parts of that question is, have there been conversations or agreements in place between these providers and J M H?
So we can speak, uh, directly about the hospitals within Trinity Health of New England Network, as there has been, uh, much dialogue and specific agreements in place with St. Francis Hospital Medical Center, uh, which operates a high-level maternity unit as well as a neonatal intensive care unit to accept all patients from the community and any emergent transfers that would arise from Johnson's Emergency Department.
And is there any evidence to support the inpatient obstetric capacity at these hospitals and the number of deliveries for the most recent completed fiscal year?
Can you just re-ask the question one more time? I just want to make sure I understand.
Is there any evidence to support the inpatient obstetric capacity at these hospitals, the ones that you just mentioned, and the number of deliveries for the most recent completed fiscal year?
So the data regarding the utilization at the other hospitals was not part of our application, but we'd be happy to provide that data. We have never encountered a situation where St. Francis Hospital or Medical Center uh, has expressed any capacity concerns, uh, regarding, uh, the patients from the primary service area or transfers from Johnson Memorial Hospital during this time at all.
Just as a point of clarification, the data for the last fiscal year, which I believe is what you asked about there, there, I didn't want it to sound like there was an admission there was no data included.
Data for the last fiscal year for those hospitals. Yeah.
But if that data is available, we'd be happy to produce it and supplement the record. That would be helpful.
Great, thank you. Does J M H have any existing relationships with other obstetrical or prenatal providers in the community?
Johnson Memorial Hospital has a robust array of services and relationships with prenatal care providers in the Enfield community that are part of Trinity Health of New England and have been part of other, uh, practices, both midwives and obstetrics. There has been a robust effort over the past several years to continue to expand and enhance those relationships and to provide those prenatal and post-delivery services in that community within that service area so that, uh, women of reproductive age, those that are pregnant, are able to receive that care and then work with their providers on a location for their inpatient labor and delivery services.
Okay, and my final question. Um, how would these relationships and other facilities be affected by the closure?
I think, um, in thinking about the closure of these services, there's been an active and robust investment in relationships and services for women in the prenatal and post-delivery period. And so as a result of the ability to allocate resources in a different way, I would uphold that those relationships are actually stronger. There has been an investment of resources, uh, for clinical care, specifically in Enfield, have obstetricians there, have midwives there, to have breast surgeons there, to have primary care there, to provide access and strengthen those relationships as well as the relationships with the inpatient labor and delivery units at both St. Francis Hospital Medical Center and other hospitals, including Mercy.
Thank you. That's it for my questions.
Thank you.
J M H suggests transfer to other hospitals who, um, you, you said because of your low birth rate, you would recommend transfer. But, um, Manchester also has a low birth rate. Why would you suggest transferring patients there?
We would, patients are left from the perspective of where a patient decides where to deliver. Um, that's a decision for them and their obstetrician or obstetrical provider to decide. From a transferring perspective, we have always, um, preferentially transferred patients to St. Francis Hospital Medical Center, specifically those for which there was a high-risk condition or a, uh, or a comorbidity that required a level of maternal and then potentially neonatal care that would be, that would be, that would be needed. That could include specialized services, including having a NICU present or a neonatal ICU present. Um, our protocols and transfer protocols out of the emergency department have included St. Francis as our receiving destination uh, for those patients, not Manchester.
This is one of the possibilities for, for people who want to have a baby to go to that hospital. But there's, they have similar levels and similar services. So why should you be allowed to discontinue yours? Well, they should be expected to keep and pick up your overflow.
So there, so, um, I won't, I won't comment on the specifics of their situation in regards to this because I don't know the specifics, uh, of Manchester Memorial Hospital and the context for which they provide those deliveries and the resources they may have. Um, in regards to the volume, uh, I think there is a, uh, there is evidence to suggest that facilities that have more resources and that provide more births would, um, lead to better outcomes, um, with those resources. And so, um, in a, in an environment where there are limited resources potentially, there could be some logic to ensuring that care is delivered in settings for which the volumes are higher. And so I can't speak to them, but to facilities for which there are more deliveries happening. It's, I uphold the statement that I think that's better for patient care, uh, and sustainable for, uh, for the long term.
Uh, this is Annie Fiala. I'm going to begin my questioning. Um, so who is going to be in charge of the emergency department? And what are the credentials of the emergency department physicians that would be required to, to deliver a baby in an, in an emergency situation?
Our emergency department, um, is led by Our emergency department is led by a medical director, who is a board-certified emergency medicine physician, and a nurse leader to oversee the services delivered in the emergency department. Not being an emergency medicine physician myself, but certainly as a family physician, have some experience with what training is like. Emergency medicine physicians and those that are board-certified are trained in the range of emerg, conditions that can present to an emergency room, which would, could and often includes obstetrical complaints, which would be, could be a, a woman in labor to deliver, to be able to competently deliver an uncomplicated newborn in such a situation. They're also highly trained to understand and identify when risks may be present and may be more beneficial to transfer a patient to another location or a higher level of care. We specifically engaged in an educational, a program with the emergency room providers that focused on obstetrical emergencies to ensure that in addition to their medical training, which those competencies are upheld through their board certification process, just like with other physicians, to give additional education in obstetrical emergencies, so that we could facilitate and support and ensure that that requisite level of recent education and training was present at the time in which we were going through the process, as we are now, to close the inpatient labor and delivery services.
So the nurses in the emergency department then, who have been trained, are they or have they been compensated for this training to perform these additional services?
I'm sorry, just to clarify, I thought your last question was about the ER doctors. And then you, so now you're asking about the ER nurses?
Both, I mean, so, so yes, I was asking about the credentials for the ED physicians to be required to deliver a baby in emergency situations, then you were discussing the training that had been taken place, or I'm assuming nurses were also involved in this training, yes. So, my question then is, has anyone been compensated for this training to enhance their services capability?
So, any, I'll clarify this, I'll, I'll answer this in maybe a couple ways. As an organization, when we train staff, we arrange for and pay for that training and provide that training during time in which they are working, you know, which is paid time. This is, so that from that perspective, yes, the training is fully covered and compensated to the staff that are undergoing that training, if that's something that is a requirement of their employment. Training emergency medicine physicians, PAs, or nurses in obstetrical emergencies is not an expansion of their scope of work. This is part of what their competencies would be, working in an emergency department, because at any point in an emergency department, an obstetrical emergency could come in, whether you're at St. Francis, at Mercy, at Hartford, at Johnson, et cetera. We felt like it, it is a, it was in our, it was in the best interest of connecting with our providers, with our nurses, with our community, ensuring that we had provided that, but that's not additionally, an additional scope of work that would need an additional responsibility, for example.
Thank you, how many OB physicians are currently credentialed by JMH?
Zero.
So what was the staffing, labor and delivery staffing like in the past three years? How many physicians, nurses, et cetera, and then what are the staffing numbers like now? If this needs to be a late file, that's also fine.
Thank you, I, we're, want to make sure we have the numbers right, because it's a detailed ask about a three-year period of a variety of different disciplines. Perhaps that's the, perhaps that'd be, that's for us, just to gather that information and provide it to you.
Let's make that as a late file, and the answer to be responded to in the late file is, what is, what was the labor and delivery staffing like in the past three years? How many physicians, nurses, et cetera? And, and what are the labor and delivery staffing numbers like now? How many, same question.
Okay, thank you.
We might want to add this one to the late files, while we don't know yet. But, so what are the appropriate staffing levels for the labor and delivery department at JMH?
You're talking about both for physicians and for nurses?
Yes.
Broken up separately?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, we can add that to the file, I know we, there's, we had provided in testimony 12.6 FTEs of nursing would be required for minimum staffing, minimum staffing for 24/7 coverage. Physician coverage also must be 24/7 availability, and so we can determine what that would be, but it would be more than one.
So the applicant actually quotes an FTE of 12.4 in the application, but 12.6 in the prefiled testimony.
Okay, well, let's clarify those, we can clarify and we can.
And can you also explain what an FTE is in your late file? Because I was unable to find that at any point where you explained what FTE meant, so.
Yes, absolutely, so we can, we can include that into the, the late file as well. In conferring with Sue, my colleague here, we believe it is 12.6. FTE refers to a full-time equivalent. And so that is a representation of a 40-hour colleague, 40-hour staff member employee.
In addition, the answers to the hearing, hearing issues, the applicant states that they hired 11 individuals, but Ms. Petterini D'Amico says that they only hired eight, so just to clarify which number is accurate.
We can, we can provide a detailed schedule of the staff that were hired. The difference between those numbers, we believe, is relating to non-permanent hires, so contract labor staff that had been engaged to try to supplement and provide the required number of staff, but were not actually hired for long-term employment. But we, we can clarify that in the late file.
Sure, thank you. PDF page eight on, on the completeness letter response, "The average cost of deliveries per self-pay patient does not look accurate for C-section deliveries and vaginal deliveries." So just a clarification for that.
Okay, I will refer to the data and we can clarify. We can clarify that to ensure that.
I just want to make sure you see what I'm saying.
I see, I see the numbers, I do see the numbers for fiscal year 16.
Yes.
And so we will return to our financial data and update that accordingly.
Also, the cost is not provided for fiscal year 2017 and 2019. So, and also, even though JMH was closed for 2020, cost, I'm assuming still would have been established. So we would need to have that information as well.
For 17, 19, and 20.
Okay. Yes.
Okay.
So this is a point of clarification, I believe you're asking 17, 19, 20, 21, and 22?
Yes.
Corrected costs, even if it was closed?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure we submit the right materials.
Do St. Francis Hospital, Mercy, and JMH all accept the same insurance companies?
Yes.
Do you happen to know what the cost for services at Mercy Hospital are for labor and delivery?
We could, if that is a request, we could provide that. All the hospitals in Trinity Health of New England have the same financial assistance policy, but we can provide the cost of services at the other hospital.
So St. Francis Hospital's cost is almost double that of JMH? Who will be responsible for that increase in cost?
So, one of the, we can provide some addition, provide some additional look into that, but one of the potential explanations for that increase in cost at St. Francis compared to Johnson is that it's not, is not comparing like-for-like services. And, and so, St. Francis Hospital Medical Center does care for a more complex, higher-level, higher acuity population, which would carry higher costs. Before the same level of care, we would expect that the costs at the different facilities are much more similar. So, we could, upon request, look to compare the cost for like services at the different facilities to be able to, you know, more specifically answer that question?
Yeah.
If that makes sense?
Yes.
Does that make sense about, a, a service that's provided at St. Francis that could not be provided at Johnson, because a, a mother needed higher level of care or a baby needed a neonatal intensive care unit, would considerably drive up the overall cost for labor and delivery services at St. Francis, which wouldn't be a comparison to Johnson, because those mothers would always be delivering at St. Francis and not Johnson.
So if the cost comes back, and so it's more, for example, would that then increase the cost of the co-pay to the patient?
If, if the costs are discrepant?
Yes.
That would depend upon the commercial insurers' guidelines regarding the plan that the patient had. We know that a significant percentage of patients that deliver from the primary service area or at Johnson in the past had a government payer. So, in our understanding and estimate, that would not change the patient responsibility, because those patients have a similar responsibility regardless of the facility. It would actually then, in, in turn, be, would go to the hospital as unreimbursed care, for example. It would be, it would only apply if there was a commercial payer that had a different arrangement, so that would have to be looked at by patient's insurance plan.
I have a follow-up, wouldn't, so while the majority do, there are some self-pay patients or people with out-of-pocket costs. If, and now that you aren't delivering, a, a birth could be, a birth that would have been handled, JMH could get transferred to St. Francis. Could that ca, would there be more out-of-pocket costs for a, a consumer with a, with commercial coverage that goes to St. Francis versus JMH?
It's, it is, it's hard for me to, it's hard for me to comment, because it is possible, but not necessarily true.
Could there be a higher cost for someone who is a self-paid patient? Who maybe wouldn't qualify under your financial assistance program?
Again, I think we have to assess what the services that were provided, and cost is really, cost for a self-paid patient who doesn't meet guidelines, that would be completely out-of-pocket cost, would be driven by the array of services that they provided. And if the services were, were more so, then that cost would go up. If the services were less, then the cost would be less.
Is JMH considered at risk of closure financially?
You know, there's not a question that was thinking about answering today, I'll be honest. The sustainability of hospitals in the current healthcare environment is one that is, is being considered. Right now, you know, there are many hospitals, Johnson Memorial Hospital included, that, for which the financial sustainability is a concern.
Would you say that's solely due to labor and delivery?
No.
Does JMH anticipate closing any other departments?
I don't have any comment on that at this time.
If a patient is transferred to a hospital out of network due to proximity and emergency status, who will cover the cost to and from if sent out of state?
So one of the ways in which we have looked to address this, I mean, in partnership with the Office of Health Strategy, have recently opened up a emergency medical service branch location at Johnson Memorial Hospital for an EMS service. So if a patient does require a transfer out of the facility, and we utilize our service, that is something that is covered within their, their, their episode of care. That is once, I'll just leave it at that, covered within their episode of care, regardless of the facility in which they are transferred to.
I have a follow-up, how do they get home?
We would arrange for transportation.
At your cost or their cost?
So, our discharge planners, so I'll, I'll bring up a couple points. In discharge planners at the hospital will always seek to make sure that patients have safe discharge plans to return to their primary residence or the location of their, you know, their choosing. And will assess if that is something that they would be qualified for to receive assistance, whether that's taxi services or if they need ambulance services or otherwise. In the case of the primary service area for Johnson, specifically in labor and delivery, and looking at the statistics, we know that, as we've mentioned before, prior to closure, 75 to 80% of patients were already opting voluntarily to deliver at other hospitals. So, and in that primary service area, more than 90% have access to private transportation and presumably utilize that to go to their healthcare services, whether within Trinity Health of New England or out, or elsewhere. That would be a decision that we would make based on the judgment of our discharge planners and care coordinators and making sure that somebody has a safe place to return to.
While en route to JMH, has the EMS diverted any patients to another hospital in the past three to four years?
Specifically for labor and delivery?
Yes.
I, I, I'm not sure we can look to try to find that information.
My next question is a batch of questions that kind of go all together. So when a woman shows up at the hospital to deliver a baby, how will JMH determine if ER nurses will deliver the baby or if there's time to transfer the patient to another location?
That decision is within the clinical judgment of the provider in assessing the situation and what level of risk and emergency it is.
The second part of that question is who is going to make that call?
The, the, the provider. Provider makes.
If the decision is to transfer a patient via ambulance, what staff members will be present in the ambulance?
Just conferring with Sue, just to, to ensure that, yeah, so EMS is all, emergency medical services staff are always present, of course, during a transfer. And the level of acuity of that transfer dictates who accompanies the patient. In higher acuity situations, a, a registered nurse would accompany the patient, depending on the clinical situation, that may or may not be clinically indicated. It really would depend upon the situation, and that would go for labor and delivery services, but any medical transfer out of any facility.
This is Steve Lazarus, do you have any protocols that is related to OB-GYN services that are provided in the ED setting?
We do have a policy and protocols on the triage and evaluation of obstetrical patients in the emergency department, yes.
Can we get a copy of that, please?
Yes, we can, we could provide that.
Are, are there any required, not requirements, are there any guidelines at a national level that are utilized? at a national level that are utilized and what association or or guidance that, that's, that is being used?
And specifically for
For OB-Y, OB-GYN.
OB-GYN generally or emergency?
Well, generally and in emergency cases, I'm assuming maybe the same organization, for example. I'm not sure.
We can, we can, uh, we can ensure that we provide the references. I don't want to misspeak. I, I, I believe that there are guidelines for this, for emergency obstetrical care that would arise from the medical professional societies of obstetrics and gynecology, which would be the American College of Obstetrics and Gynecology, or the American College of Emergency Medicine, as well as the Professional Society for Obstetrical Nurses, referred to as A1. We can, uh, ensure, uh, that the, that the, that's validated and included with, uh, the policy and procedure, if that would be helpful.
Yes, okay, thank you. We'll take that as a late file.
Um, so continuing on, so when a woman shows up at, at the hospital to deliver a baby, um, when would JMH allow someone to drive themselves versus ambulance?
If a, if our understanding that if a patient is presenting to the emergency department, and they are in need of a transfer to another facility, then we arrange that transportation. They would not drive themselves, um, unless they were, uh, ready for discharge, and then they chose to transport themselves to another facility.
With that being said, will transportation be provided to the patient and their families or just the patient?
That, that is a consideration that we can, that we can look to make. I'm not sure, we've had a decision on that at this point. Certainly to the patient themselves, and we can evaluate them.
Uh, if transportation, I think, actually you might have already asked this one, but I'm going to ask it one more time. Um, if transportation is provided, who will cover the cost of transportation? Uh, what if the patient does not have insurance?
We cover the cost. Yeah, I want to be very clear about that. Um, for the record and for just to clarify, if a patient presents to the hospital and they need transfer to another facility, we will provide and cover that transportation. It will not go to the patient.
I'm sorry, I'm just going to backtrack really quick also. Uh, you had mentioned an article with that two hundred, uh, number. Would you be able to provide that article?
Believe it is referenced in the application and
That's all for me.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I have a couple of questions. Which, a couple of the questions I have are in the areas of quality, but before I get there, just had a couple of follow-ups. Uh, going back to recruiting, can you talk about what role is Trinity playing with the hospital in recruiting staff to bring it to appropriate levels?
Rick, I'll answer this in a few ways, and speaking about nursing staff or staff in general, yeah. Um, Trinity Health, uh, so, and if, everything that happens at Johnson Memorial Hospital, happens within the context of utilizing the support and resources within the larger organization that it is a part of. Trinity Health, uh, being a large, national, not-for-profit, faith-based system, has done some innovative recruitment, many innovative recruitment, uh, initiatives, and has, uh, talent acquisition and recruitment support that that is a robust department to help fill positions. That includes things as innovative as creating its own internal travel nurse agency, referred to in the testimony as First Choice, uh, which creates a network of nurses that are able to provide services at hospitals, including at Johnson Memorial Hospital, and Johnson has been, uh, the benefit to that and has sustained some services over the past several years, specifically, for example, in our emergency department. Trinity Health has also leveraged many, much support, um, from a recruitment perspective in the departments, in terms of marketing, uh, in terms of providing support for outreach, for program, innovative programs to bring in new types of nurses or staff into the organization, including in places where we can hire graduate student nurses to kind of, to create a pipeline to recruit and retain, and, uh, I may be forgetting things, but there's a whole host of other, you know, activities. Trinity Health is, you know, very much engaged as we all are part of the same organization to help staff any of the different areas of our hospitals.
So how's that translated to OB-GYN, in particular, at GMH?
So those, all of the, all of the resources and programs were looked to be maximized and utilized to its full extent to try to address the staffing gap, which still led us to this unsustainable place in which, uh, we found ourselves. That goes for nursing, um, and well as, um, other staff.
Um, so we talked about the eight, um, nurses that were hired and, or trained, went through a training program, and I think you've only two stayed, uh, through the program. And the last one, I think that's, that was like around twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and then the program was paused like April of twenty twenty. Hasn't been any recruiting efforts ongoing since then, or has the focus been on moving the patients to other facilities for access of care?
I, what we, what I want to, what we want to stress and, and what we've been discussing is that we want to, is the, is the recruitment of nurses was, was vigorous and robust during twenty twenty and then into twenty twenty-one when the training program was implemented and nurses were recruited and then trained. We, we may need to confer a little bit on specifically, you have a question about the exact timelines of efforts, but there remained positions posted and recruited for during and during that period of time when the training was occurring and then after. When those nurses that were hired and they were fully trained, elected to not continue with their employment at Johnson, but actually go to other hospitals, all of whom remained employed. Nobody's, you know, jobs were eliminated, but those nurses were employed in other areas for their choice after that training period. Recruitment continued for a period of time during and then, and then after that.
Can you, I, I just like a follow-up. Um, when was their training completed?
We would have to get an exact date for you for that, because there were, there were some nurses that were, and I know I'm not testifying, but we needed an exact date, because some nurses were part-time, and that's why they were fit into a program that took longer than nurses that were full-time, you know, and more available to do the training. So we do know it was eight nurses in that period of time, but when, we will need to follow up with a specific date training program is complete.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, going back to the OB-GYN, um, physician piece, was there ever an option or something, anything discussed with St. Francis? As your sister hospital, if a physician could be shared or be brought to JMH to help provide that service?
Yes, and that's something that, um, has been a discussion for all throughout this period of time and in continuing. Challenge there are the physicians that, uh, are working at St. Francis Hospital Medical Center that are providing services in the community, want to work at St. Francis Hospital Medical Center, not at Johnson Memorial Hospital. And in addition, the context, uh, there is in a circumstance for which there are limited resources, and those physicians are needed at St. Francis Hospital. It would not be serving the community to move them out and then leave challenges in, in capacity elsewhere. And so that has not been a viable strategy, despite exploring that. And what has been a, what had, what we have felt like was the best interest of serving the patients in the community was shifting some of their care in recruiting into physicians to, to continue to provide inpatient services at St. Francis, which is a place that obstetricians and gynecologists are working and want to work. But having their outpatient, uh, care being delivered in the service area of Johnson Enfield in particular, to be able to care for those patients in the ways before and after delivery, that can help support overall health outcomes and health equity. Is not, it was not a viable strategy to, to relocate those physicians without creating other challenges or those physicians leaving the network.
Is this, is that something that that's isolated to OB-GYN program or it, because that seems like it could be translated to many other services for a community hospital?
I'm specific, specifically speaking now because of OB-GYN, because of the way in which we've, uh, being able to invest in infield to provide those outpatient services, but I, I think you are, uh, attending to a, a relevant point that is a challenge, uh, for physicians, particularly where there are physicians and specialties that are dealing with significant shortages. There's not an abundance of providers in virtually all specialties these days, uh, and many times, uh,
Okay, can, uh, all right, uh, is everybody back? So I apologize, we briefly lost Zoom. This is the public hearing for Johnson Memorial Hospital, document number twenty-two dash three-two-six-one-two CON. As you were informed upon us restarting this hearing, this hearing is being recorded. You're remaining in this Zoom, um, by remaining in this Zoom or in this room, you, so, um, you consent to being recorded. If you do not re, um, consent to being recorded, please exit the Zoom or the hearing room at this time. Uh, I'm going to go ahead and resume the question that was being asked by Mr. Lazarus, and he will repeat the entire question for everyone listening.
Sure, and, you know, the, um, transcript has been going all along, so the record is intact. Uh, it's just a Zoom recording paused for momentarily. So going back to the question, um, so, I guess, you know, I, I think we talked about, you know, the community hospital versus losing staffing and, you know, especially to a, more of a hospital that's in a city or more of a mainstream near tertiary care hospital. So these reasons that you've sort of talked about provided, they're not specific to, you, you, I mean, obviously you're talking about specifically OB-GYN, but they're not isolated just to OB-GYN, it could be for other services as well.
I'm going to object to that question. We're here on the closure of labor and delivery with regard to Johnson Memorial.
Right.
Not to the overall to some hearing on the overall community network and what's going on with other departments and other divisions. I don't think that's, that's the appropriate question for Dr. Lewis in the context of this hearing.
True, however, my question was, wasn't about other, another context saying, this same reason could, could be beyond just the OB-GYN. So it's not exclusive just to, I guess my question, this is not exclusive to OB-GYN, then. This reason, the, the reasons why the recruiting for this particular service, or are you saying this is only solely to, related to OB-GYN?
I, I, I'll state what I think is likely, um, something that's recognized by healthcare systems across the country, recruitment is a challenge everywhere. Shortages in nursing and in providers impacts communities differently. But there are rare exceptions to where it is not presenting challenges, and Johnson Memorial Hospital has felt that extremely acutely in the obstetrical labor and delivery service. But it has, it is not, uh, isolated, uh, to being the only service that, for which we have challenged, been challenged in staffing, and for which being part of a, a system leverages us, us benefits. And so despite all of those efforts and benefits, labor and delivery services continued to challenge when perhaps we likely had more investment in staffing recruitment than perhaps a like hospital without similar connections to a system.
Thank you. What is the annual cost of the labor and delivery for Johnson to run the program financially?
As that program has, uh, not operated in the last few years, I don't have that number right now.
Would you be able to provide as a late files, the last year, full year that it, um, was functioned, that it had functioned?
I believe we could. That would have been fiscal year, uh,
Nineteen nineteen, probably twenty nineteen, right? Because twenty twenty is when it was paused.
It would be fiscal year twenty nineteen.
Yes, that would be.
I thought that was included in the constitution, but to the extent it is, we'll we'll either highlight where it is
Yes.
Or we'll do that as a lead file.
Great, thank you, of course. All right, so what is the minimum, um, volume level needed to provide inpatient OB services at the hospital and have a quality and safe program?
I don't think that there is a magic number to that answer. Having a quality and safe program, uh, requires having clinical competencies amongst all of the staff that are ready and prepared to meet the needs of the patients twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. That becomes more and more challenging to do, the lower the volume. Uh, but there is not one number where I would say safe or not safe. It is a continuum of risk, and it, uh, really deter, is really based upon the ability to safely operate the services. Um, although lower deliveries makes that more challenging.
The two hundred number that was mentioned earlier.
Yes.
Would, is that from some, is that related to a professional guideline? Is that something for your program?
No, I was in, uh, believe it's in reference to a scientific article that looked at low volume or varying volumes of obstetrical units, maternity units and labor and delivery units relative to maternal mortality in a variety of different settings. And the study categorized types of hospitals based on the numbers of births, and in that looked at those under two hundred as being a category of a low-volume hospital that carried higher risk or worse outcomes.
Is there any, are there any professional guidelines that we've talked about earlier, possibly submitting some, that would provide a minimum level of volume for an OB?
I would, would have to reference to see if that is, uh, specifically mentioned as a number in any of the professional guidelines.
Okay. We may request that as a late file, if you can, if, at least if you can look into that.
Absolutely, we can look into that and, uh, I believe it's, it's, it's likely not to be the case to have a specific number, but one in which talks about the services that are provided and the And the, the scientific analysis and the articles in the peer review literature has looked at that and what the impact is on outcomes.
Great, thank you. How will GMH provide the PSA population with the relevant information regarding the labor and delivery services to allow patient choice?
As, as with any service changes, we would engage in a communication plan that would involve both external and internal communications and ensure as we have that the population is aware of the existing prenatal services and the options for delivery at other area hospitals and the services that Johnson Memorial Hospital provides where they needed. Recently, one example of that was directly educating and training and communicating with the local EMS companies in the surrounding towns where we did some direct training from board certified obstetrician regarding obstetrical emergencies that EMS can encounter in the field. And that was well received and part of ongoing communication and engagement with our community to let them know what services we provide and how we can help arrange that they get to the right services for all their needs.
Thank you. As far as patient choice, as part of this education, are are the patients educated on which hospitals, for example, St. Francis is a Catholic hospital versus that may not offer all the women's health services that another hospital might offer? Is that part of that education and part of the choice? Are they made aware that prior to the transfer or you know, providing delivery there?
I, I appreciate that question and the answer to that is yes, they should be made aware of that. And we can ensure that that is something that is done. I want to highlight, you know, working within a Catholic healthcare system, one of our core values is reverence. And so we honor the dignity and the decisions of every patient and would ensure that every patient who has a desire for a certain type of care or needs a service that we provide and deliver that or we arrange for that service to be delivered. And so therefore, options are all ways available. It would be included in patient education and provider-patient discussions regarding their care. So that the full range of reproductive health options would be arranged for if indicated or desired.
Thank you. As, as far as going back to a couple of the late files, can we get late files that update the financial attachment to the most recent completed year, our year-to-date? And as well as any of the tables or there within the C O N application that could be updated, we could get that as a late file.
By the financial application, you mean the workbooks?
The financial worksheet, yes, the attachment, the Excel.
Yes.
Yes, that and then I think there are some tables in the application, we can get those, anything that was, that needs to be revised for year-to-date numbers. I think I'm all set for now, thank you.
Okay, um, I actually put my questions into everybody else. Actually, no, I have one last question left. The closest hospital to JMH is Mercy Medical Center, which is in, in Massachusetts. How would the, you know, the recommendation of a that a person who needs labor and delivery go to a out-of-state hospital possibly affect the, the labor and delivery charges to a unexpected mother?
What I will, one of the things that we've worked on tremendously as an organization, Trinity Health in New England, with hospitals in Connecticut and Massachusetts is the seamlessness, to the extent possible, of care transitions between one facility or another. And we regularly have patients that reside in one state, receive care in another, or transition from an emergency department at Mercy Medical Center, for example, and receive care at Johnson Memorial Hospital, for example. Particularly use an example of the geriatric psychiatry unit that was open. And it is our, it has been our philosophy and our actions such that both facilities will accept as many of the insurances possible so that that experience is one that does not impact their cost of care with same contracts being managed by Trinity Health in New England. I can't, you know, there are going to be individual situations within that where there may be some variation to that. Because if there is a, an insurer that may have a different philosophy or not be accepted in one hospital in a different state or another potentially. But we have made efforts where we will accept even Medicaid patients across state lines and certainly all the commercial payers and Medicare across those with similar contracts. So it's difficult to answer with one hundred percent certainty for every payer. But the intent and the actions is that that would not be impacted. And if there was any impact, it would be explained to the patient prior to any transfer or any discussion regarding that being the primary preferred location for care.
And how are, how are you notifying the patients of, I mean, you said you were, but what are you doing to notify them? Is it given in writing, is it just a discussion?
Yes, it would be given in writing. If there was a, a calculation of the expected out-of-pocket costs, that would be calculated in advance of receiving the service, then that would be provided in writing.
All questions based on that?
Just one question I have. I know you had talked about, you had referenced earlier the SG two, H G S G two report or publication that was projecting a decline over the next five years.
Yes.
Would you be able to provide us a copy of that?
I will.
Attachment three? All right, thank you.
Note page attachment for you start on. Oh, you're right. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right, so that is it for the questions from us. I'm going to allow attorneys DeBacio to go ahead and ask any questions based off ours, if you have any at the moment. Or if you'd like a pre-freece before that.
We take a brief recess?
Sure, let's take a five minutes, ten minutes, what do, what do you need?
I'm cognizant that we're coming up on the lunch hour, so why don't we take ten minutes?
Sure.
If that's possible.
No problem. We'll come back at eleven fifty-five, at which point you, you can begin your questions.
Thank you, Madam Hearing Officer, I have my questions at this time, thank you.
I do apologize, apparently I turned my mic off and it was difficult to hear me. All right, since there are no questions from the applicant's witness, we will be adjourning for lunch, but before we do, I'd like to remind the public that you can sign up to give public comment starting at three P M today, or public comment will begin at three P M, but you can sign up now for that public comment. If you would like to go online into the chat feature and provide your name and phone number and state that you would like to make a public comment, we will call the comments in order of signup. We may allow public officials who will register to speak first, but then we will move in, in order of the, of the registration online. All right, it is now eleven fifty-eight and I will go ahead, oh, yes. No problem. We will do that after public comment.
Okay.
Yes. No. I do, I do apologize who was listed that way. I always, on mine, I always do the public comment, the public portion. Then we will list late files for you and then we will do closing arguments and statements. Yes, yes. Yes, I do apologize. Yeah, no, we will do public comment first, you can comment on that before you, before we adjourn for the hidden day. So after, you know, if we don't have public comment in the room or online, that may determine our timetable, so.
Absolutely, that's fine.
All right, okay, so at this point, it is eleven fifty-nine and we will go on lunch break now. We will see you all three P M for public comment, but if you'd like to set up now, you feel free, thank you. All right, welcome back, everybody, it's three P M. For those of, for those of you just joining us, this is the second portion of today's hearing concerning a C O N application filed by Johnson Memorial Hospital Incorporated, docket number twenty-two dash three-two-six-one-two C O N dash C O N. We had the technical portion this morning. As a reminder, this hearing will be, will, we have somebody on camera. This hearing will end at five fifteen P M at the latest. All parties should be exiting the parking garage before six P M. At six P M, the parking garage is closed for the night and no cars are able to exit the garage after that time. Signing up for public comment has been all day in person and on Zoom in the comment section. At this point, I would like to ask if we have any signups from Leslie or, no, do we have a person on camera? All right, hello ma'am, my name is Hearing Officer Novy. Are you, are you on camera because you would like to make a, a public comment? What is her name, can you? Hello, Brenda Bookbinder, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes, I've submitted written testimony. I am here to witness the process.
Okay, so if you're here to just, to view the hearing, we are going to ask that you turn your, that you turn your video camera off so that the people who are making public comment can be seen. At this point, I don't think we've had anyone else, anyone sign up. We do have another person who's on camera. Can someone tell me the name since I'm far away and cannot see it? I'm sorry? Representative Tammy Nuccio, hello, Representative Nuccio, can you hear me?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Would you like to make a, a public comment?
I would, ma'am.
All right, go ahead.
Hi, I am Representative Tammy Nuccio of the fifty-third district. I neighbor Stafford where Johnson Memorial Hospital is. And I have been in talks with the hospital for, I want to say, over a year now in regard to their services and specifically in regard to their closing of maternity services. I've been following along with the meeting today and reading the information. I'll also be supplying written testimony for this. As an elected representative, I am here to express my concerns that I'm very worried and concerned about Johnson Memorial closing maternity. We've seen a very troubling trend of hospitals buying these small rural hospitals. And unfortunately, the very first thing that they do is they close or look to close the maternity sections in these hospitals. If you do a quick search, the towns that Johnson represents are a lot of small rural towns, lower income towns, towns that do not have a lot of resources and do not have a lot of availability to medical care as it is. The shrinking of their services to exclude maternity is going to mean a lot of women and a lot of families are going to be pushed to have to travel to Hartford or to Mercy Hospital in Massachusetts, which is an entire different state than ours. Just putting that out there for maternity services, and I do not think that is fair. I want to give Johnson the credit that is due, and they have done a lot of work to improve their services. At one point, the conversation was they were closing all of their intensive care and their inpatient beds, and we really challenged them to dig deep and to find a way to bring these services back post-COVID. I think a lot of the arguments that have been made by Johnson in regard to not having staffing and such are self-created problems, which we've seen happen in Wyndham Hospital, now we're seeing it again in Johnson. And I know there are other hospitals that are experiencing the same thing. When you say that you're going to close a unit, there is no stability for that, that workforce. And you're not going to get people who are going to dedicate themselves to working in a hospital where their jobs might be on the line. Johnson used to do a good amount of deliveries. And I think with investment, they could do it again. And I'm asking you to please consider the moms who are going to be thrust into an ambulance and told they have to drive thirty to forty minutes before they're in a facility to give birth. Those women, especially lower income women, not having the resources around to have family there to help them in their most vulnerable times. And just think if they don't have transportation, how they're getting home from a hospital in Hartford to a town like Union or Stafford or Wellington, when those towns don't even have bus services. They don't have Uber, they don't have bus services, they don't have public transportation. And these are the women that we are going to be putting out by closing maternity at Johnson Hospital. I don't feel like there's been a good enough case to show that we should not have maternity there. And I think this hospital, this small hospital has been bought by a larger hospital who quite frankly can afford to put the money in to make a nice state-of-the-art maternity ward where women can continue to get service. So that's a lot there, but I'm just asking you to think about this C O N. And who is going to serve these, service these women and how far we're going to be putting them out by closing these services and asking that we, we do the right thing and make sure women's health is a top priority for our hospitals. And if they're not willing to do it on their own, then we make sure that they know it's a top priority for us. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Representative Nuccio, we do appreciate your comments today. All right, is there anybody else who would like to make a comment? I'm going to have Leslie, if you could unmute everybody for a second, we'll just ask if there's anybody who is currently listening to this hearing who would like to make a public comment, we'll give you a, a chance to speak up right now. Is everyone unmuted? Okay. Okay, if you would like to make a public comment, you may unmute yourself and say your name. All right, hearing no one who has stated their name, we will go ahead and remute everybody again. Thank you. Would like to let everybody know that if you would like to make a written comment, we will be taking taking written comments for a week. If you would like to submit a written comment, you may do so to CON, to CONcomment@ct.gov. Again, that is C-O-N-C-O-M-M-E-N-T@ct.gov. We will be accepting written comments for seven calendar days from today. And so if you would like to, please go ahead and submit that in writing, and it will be uploaded into the record. Our contact information, information is also on our website and the public information sheet that was provided that, or the agenda that is posted online. Yes. All right, I would like to make another announcement about public comments that we are accepting written public comment for seven days through email. Our email address is CONcomment@ct.gov. Again, that is C-O-N-C-O-M-M-E-N-T@ct.gov. We will be taking public comments for seven calendar days from today. If you would like to submit one online, we do welcome that. All right, now, now that we have heard from our representatives and there is no additional public comment, I would like to move on to, are we ready to go to late files to list? Take a quick break? Where do you want to? Okay, normally we would do, we list the late files, however, because there were substantial late file requests, what we would like to do is put those together into a letter, send that to you, and then give you ample time to respond. Is that okay with you, Attorney DeBacio?
That's totally fine, Madam Hearing Officer.
All right.
I think that approach makes sense, given how quickly we were going through the questions and
Yes.
back and forth about what was being requested.
There's a lot of late files. We do want to make sure that we will give you enough time. We will also give you ample time to respond to that, and if you do need more, you can always, I would suggest contacting Mr. Lazarus if the time that we suggest is not enough, is not enough for you to get those answers to us, you could easily contact him. I would request to not be sent on that email just because it ex parte communications. However, Mr. Lazarus can help with that.
Understood. Thank you, Madam Hearing Officer.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so at this time, are there any additional questions from the analysts?
Uh, no, not at this time.
All right, so I will go ahead and allow the, the applicant's attorney to ask any additional questions he may have of his own witnesses and then proceed to a closing statement.
I have no additional questions at this time. Thank you, Madam Hearing Officer.
Would you like to proceed to your closing statement?
Yes, would you prefer if I stand or is?
Either is fine with us.
Thank you. Madam Hearing Officer, members of OHS, I want to thank you for the opportunity that you've given Johnson Memorial Hospital and my colleagues here today to address any questions and provide their written testimony with regard to their application to close labor and delivery services at Johnson Memorial. I hope one thing has come across very clearly in Dr. Ruse and Mrs. Susan Pederini-D'Amico's testimony in that this decision to close labor and delivery was not, or to seek permission to close labor and delivery was not undertaken lightly and was undertaken with the quality of services in mind and eventually the care that the women who would be visiting Johnson Memorial were going to receive. That was the number one concern of Johnson Memorial throughout this entire decision-making process. And it became clear in their efforts in the last couple of years that staffing was going to be an issue of labor, at labor and delivery in Johnson Memorial. And it wasn't simply a matter of throwing more resources at it, and it wasn't simply a matter of more recruiting. The feedback we got from the nurses was that this was not a situation that they were looking forward to or comfortable working in. Because given the size of the staff at Johnson Memorial in terms of labor and delivery, the nurses would have to be doing substantially more work and taking substantially more call for fewer potential deliveries. We're talking about one delivery on average, a little over every two days. There is going to be a tremendous amount of downtime when they are at the hospital, when they are at labor and delivery, when they are waiting for somebody to come in and they're not treating or working with patients. As opposed to after they did the training program, the opportunities they got at other area hospitals and at St. Francis Medical Center where there was a much higher utilization rate, there was a much, their services were in demand, they were working, they had their normal shifts, and they were not going to be forced to do the same amount of on-call that they would have to do if they took a job at Johnson Memorial. And I think Ms. Pederini-D'Amico talked about this. That is one of those quality of life issues that doesn't necessarily come across when you're talking about dollars and cents. Because when the nurses are on call, that means they have to be near the hospital and they have to be ready to respond when they are called to come and deliver services. So if they're going to be on call significantly more at Johnson Memorial than they would be at St. Francis or any other area hospital, and they are going to be utilized much less, it's not a position that's attractive to the people that you need to fill those positions. That was a hill that was going to be too high for Johnson Memorial to climb. Because again, the training program that they did in collaboration with St. Francis was incredibly successful. All of the nurses that went through that training program got jobs. They were working for St. Francis Medical Center, or they were working for other area medical centers. It was a successful training program. And because of what we're talking about with labor and delivery at Johnson Memorial, we're not talking about taking any jobs out of the marketplace. We're not talking about layoffs. We're not talking about any cost savings because all of those people that were recruited to work at Johnson Memorial got and have jobs with St. Francis Hospital or in the Trinity Network. Furthermore, when it, when it appeared and it was clear that labor and delivery services and staffing labor and delivery services were not going to be tenable at Johnson Memorial Hospital, Johnson Memorial, as part of their service to the community and the women, men, children, and everyone in that community, started dedicating those resources to pre and postnatal care. Dr. Ruse talked at great length about all of the services that were being offered in Enfield and the surrounding communities to support women when they were pregnant, when they were after delivery, and all of those other things. These same nurses that we're talking about, the same staff that we're talking about sitting at Johnson Memorial waiting for somebody to come in and give birth are now fully utilized at these other area service centers, treating patients, touching numerous lives every single day, having positive outcomes on mothers and children, both before birth and after birth. And when you want to talk about a health equity, and you want to talk about access to healthcare, and you want to talk about a positive impact on the system, that is the positive impact that we're talking about here. You could have an employee sitting around waiting for something to happen, or you could have that same employee in a different setting, seeing multiple patients all day long in a fully utilized shift and having a positive impact on those women and children in their lives. And Dr. Ruse talked about it. When you improve that quality of care, when you improve that accessibility, when you improve that access, you're also talking about improving cost-effectiveness and positive outcomes for people in that system. So when you talk about the community in our service area as well, you're talking about a changing community which is experiencing an aging population, fewer births, you have that inverse curve moving away from each other. And yet, you have these services, the services that are being offered that touch more lives in that same community. It's more cost-effective, it's more accessible, and you're delivering higher-quality services. And again, when you talk about our service area, you're talking about changes in the overall access to healthcare that are reflecting the natural changes in the population in the service area. Patients were already moving away from using Johnson Memorial Hospital to deliver. When you look at the trends over the last 10 years, prior to COVID, the number of births taking place at Johnson Memorial was decreasing. They were using facilities such as Hartford Hospital or St. Francis that had more robust programs that were fully staffed, that had access to specialized services that Johnson Memorial was never going to have. Johnson Memorial was never going to have a neonatal intensive care unit. People that needed those types of services were always going to go to one of these larger hospitals. And people that were talking to their OB-GYNs and coming up with birth plans and coming up with an idea about how they were going to deal with this incredibly stressful but miracle that was happening in their lives had a plan for the most part that was already in place prior to going into labor to visit one of these other facilities. Now, Johnson Memorial said, even despite having the challenges with which they were dealing with in terms of staffing, labor, and delivery, they had a fully-trained emergency department on staff and ready to respond should somebody come in in distress and needed emergency treatment. They maintained the equipment that Johnson Memorial had for labor and delivery near the ER, and I apologize, I have to say near the ER because as I'm saying this, I don't remember exactly where they were keeping the equipment in the, in the facility, but it was immediately available to the ER doctors should somebody come in and need that type of service. And Johnson Memorial, the nurses and the ER doctors and the medical specialists were trained to provide those types of services. Johnson Memorial had taken efforts to look at the transportation and safety plans so that if patients did show up and they had to be transferred, whether it be to Manchester or Hartford Hospital or St. Francis Hospital, they had EMS on-site, they had registered nurses that were prepared to accompany the people in the ambulance being transferred to these other facilities. This proposal to close labor and delivery at Johnson Memorial is not a proposal to actually diminish the access to healthcare in the region. It's, it's a proposal to increase access to healthcare in the region. It's a proposal to appropriately utilize the resources that are available to Johnson Memorial and the people in those service areas in a way that reflects the needs of that service area, in a way that reflects the work that those professionals, the nurses and the doctors in those service areas want to provide in a setting in which they want to provide it. So this is not a one-sided equation where we're talking about taking something away from everybody. We are trying to find a solution, and we are trying to move forward with something that reflects what the nurses and the doctors and the people living in the service area want and what Johnson Memorial can safely provide in terms of quality services and where they can provide it. And Dr. Ruse has testified that the best, the best services and the best impact touching the most lives and having the most positive outcomes that they possibly can is not to maintain labor and delivery at Johnson Memorial Health, but to provide these other outpatient and inpatient services to women and children in the service area, such as through the Enfield facilities. What we're talking about here is not going to result in any unnecessary duplication of existing healthcare services. It's going to be streamlining and more effectively using the healthcare services that are available in the service area, available to the people in the service area. In conclusion, we would like, we would respectfully submit that the proposal to close labor and delivery at Johnson Memorial be granted because it is a proposal that reflects all of these things and all of what we want our healthcare system to accomplish. It's going to be effectively utilizing the resources that are available. It's going to be providing more access to healthcare to more people in the service area in a much more positive and productive manner than, than keeping labor and delivery open at Johnson Memorial would accomplish. It's not going to negatively impact the financial structure of the healthcare system overall. It's not going to negatively impact the financial situation of the individuals within the service area who take advantage of these services. It's about quality, accessibility, and cost-effectiveness, not just in terms of healthcare, but in terms of quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do appreciate your time here today for both you and your witnesses and your co-counsel coming down from Boston. I really appreciate that. Would like to thank everybody for attending today. It is now 3:22 PM. I will be adjourning this hearing. Like I said, we will be, we will be sending you a letter with all of your late files, and we will give you time to get those in. I would like to remind anybody who is listening, we will take public comment for seven calendar days from today, and that can be submitted through email to CONcomment, C-O-N-C-O-M-M-E-N-T@ct.gov. Thank you for listening, and we will close this hearing now.
Thank you.
Or sorry, the record will remain open, but we will be closing this portion of the hearing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.